What? Somebody using my name in vain out there?
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the like saloon?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. While Barb Streeter comes up to the microphone for her 150th presentation, we will call on Commissioner Smith to present our sesquicentennial moment. This is our opportunity to share rare and interesting facts about our city during its 150th year. Commissioner Smith?
There's been a lot of talk in Oregon City and a lot of hope that in the future of Oregon City that we refocus attention on the falls. And so I wanted to share this. This comes from a book called The Old Oregon Country, Oscar Winther. During 1851 and 1852, at least half a dozen steamships were launched to serve the Willamette River and as navigable tributary, the Yam Hill. For a brief period, Oregon's territorial capital, Oregon City, located at the falls, became the center of considerable maritime activity. From the high bluffs overlooking the town, people could have looked down upon a steadily growing number of steam-propelled vessels churning and in and out of their slips. Nestled, as the settlers were among the wooden hills surrounding the town, they must have been sensitive to the loud blasts of the steam whistles, the slow churning sound of the engines, the splash of the huge paddlewheel propellers, and the cries of all aboard for Portland, Vancouver, Cowalts Landing. The steamboat had come in earnest. A new era had dawned. One of these ships was the Willamette. There were several, many, many others, the Hoosier, and of course, we know the long list. Between 1850 and 1857, Willamette River service was extended as far up as Eugene City, the development which might possibly be explained by appearance during the last half of the '50s of a new type of steamer. The question asked in a steamboat advertisement was, is the Willamette River navigable above the mouth of the Yam Hill? The new keel boat Salem Clipper will answer that question by informing the public that she has successfully navigated this frightful river during the summer as far as Salem. There you go. Hopefully, we'll see some down there at some point in the future.
Thank you very much. And now, we formed 150th Task Force this last year, actually, to develop ideas for Oregon City to celebrate the sesquicentennial of the state. Some ideas we did were parallel to things at the state level, which actually, I learned today on our statewide conference call, the Oregon 150th Committee, I said officially sunset September 30th. So, there will be some activities that continue, but by almost all standards, the activities have been determined a success at the state level. But Barb Streeter stepped up to be the coordinator of this committee, so she handled the details of our myriad activities. And so, thank you for coming tonight to give us a report on the summation of all of that.
Thank you.
Welcome, Barb.
So, start now?
Sure.
Great. So, the city of Oregon City joined the state's 150th birthday celebration between February 14th and September 7th of 2009 with a multiple activities designed to appreciate the past, celebrate the present, and envision the future. Citizens took charge of the following activities and created events that highlighted the best of Oregon and Oregon City. William Gifford was one of our volunteers who created and maintained the OC150 website to coordinate activities and inquiries about OC150 activities. Approximately 1,300 users searched the site for information on those activities during the celebration. January 14th, we began with the official 150th postmark, which was unveiled at local post offices. Oregon City was the only city in Oregon to host a unique postmark. Collectors could acquire a first-city postmark with their 150th first-day stamp only here. Two students from Commissioner Rocky Smith's art classes, Heather Winslow and Cody Hoteling, who are both in my fifth-grade class, created Oregon City images that Postmaster Dan O'Donnell turned into unique and collectible envelopes. To celebrate the occasion, Sasquatch, the official state mascot, made an appearance at City Hall with the mayor and at a local elementary school. Once he departed, he's not been seen in Oregon City again. Is he real or imagined? February 14th was the state's actual birthday, and it was celebrated with Free Museum Day. All Oregon City museums opened their doors to visitors for tours assisted by the Oregon City trolleys. Museum members commented on the success of the event and were happy with the outcome. Meanwhile, down at the state Capitol, the legislature debated Oregon City's petition to return the Capitol to its rightful place, Oregon City. Mayor Alice Norris was invited to participate on the House floor. After much hilarious debate, the Legislative Assembly voted to create a task force that would report back in 2059. A large committee of citizens compiled information for a well-received brochure entitled 150 Things to Do in Oregon City. The brochure was funded through a grant and included events like Take a Nature Walk Through Newell Creek Canyon, and included things like Pick Wild Blackberries. The brochure was well-received in local businesses and requested multiple time by local merchants. Committee members are attempting to complete all 150 activities and challenge all others to do the same. Citizens of Oregon City love their flower baskets on the old-style lampposts and now are attracted to banners created through another grant that celebrates Oregon City. A contest was held for local artists to design artwork to appreciate, celebrate, and envision. Though the contest was held during the 150th birthday celebration, the banners created by Ingrid Aubrey were completed so that they can hang any year in Oregon City. Forty banners were created and are still hanging at this writing. The Oregon City United Methodist Church hosted an all-city food drive in May to join the 150th celebration in leaving a legacy among the citizens of Oregon City. Working with members of the 150th Task Force, the food drive collected over 10,000 pounds of food to be distributed by the local food pantries operating under the Hope umbrella, and that represents helping other people eat. With the economy as low as it was in the past 12 months, this was perhaps the most-needed 150th event. Plans are underway to continue with a third annual food drive in 2010. It is my hope that the city will steadfastly support this drive with any resource available. Board members and friends of the Oregon City Library coordinated everyone reads with the purchase and distribution of The Stubborn Twig, a book about the Japanese experience in Oregon during World War II. Noting from my trying to check that book out during the 150th celebration, it was a successful read. Which means I didn't get to check it out.
I think Commissioner Smith has a copy.
There you go. Eight thousand dollars was set aside for grants that would encourage citizens to leave a legacy for future generations. The money was made available through the Metro Enhancement Fund. Organizations and individuals applied for the grant money with five projects being awarded money for projects to be completed within a year. They are: the downtown mural brochure, which would communicate the cultural and artistic legacy represented in downtown's eight murals; a catalog documenting the art contemplance industry -- say it for me, Alice -- Haley-Holly?
Holly.
Holly Powerhouse Art Collection; number three, an artistic memorial to five --
Kies.
-- hanged in Oregon City in 1850; number four, wooden archway and replacement signs for the Peace Garden next to the Pioneer Community Center commemorating the 35th anniversary of Oregon City's sister-city relationship with Tatsushi in Japan; and number five, King Elementary School's proposed outdoor classroom, which includes the idea of working with a muralist to create a mural that would incorporate celebration of Oregon's 150 years. Almost done, thank you. A unique activity called Clear View was created and executed downtown by Main Street in Oregon City. Volunteers and business owners washed over 150 windows -- actually, 170 to be exact -- on storefronts on Main Street and awarded the golden squeegee to one Conchiences window washer. On June 10th, reenactors from Puyallup Ezra Meeker Hysterical -- historical -- (laughter) I just got off work, I haven't been home yet, I'm sorry. Ezra Meeker Historical Society and the Oregon California Trails Association set up wagons at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. Ezra Meeker, champion of the Oregon Trail, talked about his efforts to preserve the Oregon Trail. A highlight of the celebration was the invitation to participate in the Portland Rose Festival's grand floral parade. John Salisbury organized a large group of reenactors, including Doug "Dr. McLaughlin" Neely, Rocky "Dr. Barclay" Smith, and the flower-festooned Oregon City trolley. With the mayor waving from the trolley the great costumes and friendly characters, plus the Oregon City High School band, there was a lot of TV and press time for Oregon City. Then the History and Roses Tour, a project of the Rose Festival, came to Oregon City on June 13th. Out-of-town visitors crowded into the trolleys to visit McLaughlin House, Barclay House, Ermentinger House, and Rose Farm. This was a first for Oregon City. The celebration was concluded with a historical reenactment of the first documented baseball game in the Pacific Northwest. The Clackamas and the Portland Pioneers played a nine-inning match under the rules of 1866. Over 300 people attended the game at Chapin Park and enjoyed the very warm summer afternoon, cheering for the ballists and strikers over a bowl of ice cream. Activities that were planned but didn't get completed before Labor Day 2009 included planting 150 trees in Oregon City. This is underway, and planting will occur in the cool fall of 2009. A photo contest and show were organized and advertised for Oregon City residents to showcase photos of and around Oregon City, but because of a low turnout, the show was canceled. But plans are still on to showcase the photos in city publications. Karen Maury was our volunteer in charge of marketing and advertising all our programs, and she did an outstanding job and stretched every dollar that she received to the maximum capacity for advertising for the events. Oregon City should be very proud of its citizens and the hours of effort they contributed to celebrate 150 years. Our heritage is rich in paving a new path, and the Task Force members of Oregon City 150 continue the tradition in stellar fashion. And they are here tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.[761.11][761.11](applause) Great. Thank you very much, Barb.
You're welcome.
We do know how to celebrate historical events. And the nice thing about this, though, is that we do have legacies for the future also, which are very much in today and rooted in the future. So, let's move on to citizen comment. I have two. And please, when you come to the microphone, give your name and the city in which you live, and then you may speak to us for up to three minutes. Amber Holvec and William Gifford. Come forward together.
We have to be together.
Oh.[804.32][804.32](laughter) Sorry, I didn't see. Oh, please, come together. Ashley King. I just saw one name. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Amber Holvec. I work for the Oregon City Chamber, and I reside just outside of the Oregon City limits. And state your name.
Good evening. I am Ashley King, and I reside in Troutdale, Oregon, employed by the Oregon City Chamber.
And just like the Antique Fair seems to be a tradition for our community, so is our Chamber wrap-up for our annual Antique Fair. And so, it's our pleasure to come to you tonight and share the results of that. With me tonight, you've already met Ashley, and then Julie Paulson is our Communications Coordinator. So, at this point, I'll have Ashley begin our report.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ashley King, and I am the Interim Events Coordinator for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. I have distributed to the Commission a brief summary of the highlights of the 14th Annual Oregon City Open Air Antique Fair, which took place on Sunday, August 30th. The event was very successful, with an estimated attendance of 10,000 people. We had several volunteers surveying shoppers throughout the day. Many of the surveys also indicated that they were repeat shoppers who never missed this event. The surveys also revealed that visitors came from all over the Portland metro area and beyond, some even from Arizona, North Carolina, and California. Shoppers enjoyed nearly 100 vendor booths, live music, and a packed food court. There were also three new additions to the fair this year: an antique fire engine, courtesy of the Clackamas Fire District Volunteer Firefighters, a restored antique tractor owned by Chamber member Eric Nordby, and a one-day, limited-edition Antique Fair charm, which was part of the Oregon City is Charming program. This addition was intended to draw charm collectors to the Antique Fair and encourage visitors to explore more of Oregon City. All of this would not have been possible without the help and cooperation of the City of Oregon City, in particular, the Public Works Department. On behalf of the Chamber, I would like to present a couple of certificates of appreciation. The first certificate I would like to present is to Dan Ayers from the Public Works Department. Dan was there early in the morning, about 4:00 a.m., to help with electrical hookups and help to solve problems as they arose. Dan stayed for several hours in the morning and even ran back to the Public Works Building to grab another extension cord to help solve the electrical issues. Dan continued to check back in with us throughout the day and really helped to put everyone at ease. Dan truly went above and beyond and is a wonderful representative of the Public Works Department. Secondly, I have a certificate of appreciation for the Public Works Department as a whole. Jim Birch worked with us extensively throughout the planning process. Furthermore, the department approved our event banners and got them up in a very timely fashion. In addition, employees put out street barricades and helped us with storage of our signs. I would also like to recognize the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust for their invaluable support. Their generous contribution has helped the Chambers to sustain and improve this event, which continues to be the largest one-day event in Oregon City. It was wonderful working with the City of Oregon City to promote our community at a family-friendly event that has become an Oregon City tradition. Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Doug for being a block captain again this year, and Alice for volunteering at our fair. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.[1041.13][1041.13](applause)
And unfortunately, Nancy Crushour isn't here tonight, representing Public Works, so who might we --
I'd like to hand those to our trust city manager, he'll make sure they get them to the right people.
Perfect.
Oh, it's good to thank volunteers. Thank you. Now, William.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Gifford, and I don't remember which hat I'm wearing right now. I am Secretary for the Citizen Involvement Council, and am very pleased to announce that last night, we had our reactivation meeting of the Caulfield Neighborhood Association, which was very successful. We had over two dozen enthusiastic neighbors who came out on a weeknight, and we had a couple of citizens step up. We have a couple of officers, and we have some draft --
Do you remember?
Oh, you would --
That's okay, sorry.
If I would have remembered them, I would have said their names.[1102.13][1102.13](laughter) John and Larry.
How rude of me, I apologize.
John and Larry, thank you for embarrassing me once again, yes.
Anytime, anytime.[1112.13][1112.13](laughter)
John and Larry.[1114.25][1114.25](laughter) I'm sorry.
That's all fine, I apologize.
In any event.
Is there Betty in there too?
What's that?
Is there Betty in there too?
No, she's in the Barclay Hills.
Oh, that's a --
Betty Mum was --
Oh, Betty Mum, that's -- but thanks for mentioning Barclay Hills, because that was our first reactivation attempt, which has been successful. And so, this is our second neighborhood association that we have reactivated, and we feel quite good about that. We have draft bylaws for them, and they have selected a next-meeting date, which will be October 20th. It'll be Tuesday at the high school. And stay tuned for further announcements as to the activities of the CIC. Appreciate that.
Thank you for updating us.[1148.08][1148.08](applause) That concludes citizen comments. Next, let's look at the agenda. Is there any of the items that anyone wishes to have rearranged? Seeing none, we will continue on the order in which they are listed and begin with the discussion and recommendation that the city needs to make to Clackamas County regarding the urban and rural reserves process. Mr. General, do you want to start on that one, or do -- Me too. Go ahead. We've just had a joint meeting prior to this with our Planning Commission where we discussed this topic, so this is hot off the press.
Just a brief background, the metro and the three counties, Clackamas, Multnomah, and what's the other one? Washington County. I try not to think about that.[1204.33][1204.33](laughter)
It must be something in the water.
Oh, bam!
Something in the water.[1208.33][1208.33](laughter)
They're trying to determine the location of urban and rural reserves, and as part of the process, on September 23rd, those three counties are getting together with metro to indicate what their preferences are, and that's part of the reason we had this discussion at work session and need to get to some recommendation from the Commission. The county has recommended several areas. They are contained on the map to the far right, the areas in the, I guess, brown are the areas that the county has recommended. And there are two areas where the city is having some differences of opinion. One is the Forsyth Road area, which is to the north and is bordered by the Clackamas River on the north. And that's a pretty large area that we're recommending not be included, partly because of transportation issues and the cost of providing infrastructure. The other area that we have some differences of opinion is the area directly east of Newell Creek. That's an area that initially, the county had as a potential urban reserve and somehow got dropped off the map. And I believe we are recommending that that be included again. The staff did an analysis of all these areas to determine what population could be accommodated if all these areas were eventually to come into the city, and we determined that that number is commensurate with our projection of population growth to the year 2060, which is a 50-year timeline, so seems to be a fairly reasonable amount of land.
And that number?
The population number was --
Nineteen thousand.
The growth rate, we assumed, was 1.5%. The population that we can accommodate today, if all our properties build out, including the existing urban growth boundary, is about 45,000. And we could anticipate another 20,000 if these areas that we're talking about tonight were to be included in our urban growth boundary. So, we happen to answer any questions.
Okay. We did discuss this, and the Planning Commission talked about, again, what would be the greatest protection for the Newell Creek Canyon area, and then how we would also begin to think about the unsafe rural roads that need to be built to urban standards, such as Holly Lane. And then, essentially, this is a pretty conservative, I think, listing of urban reserves. Do you want to talk a little bit, just briefly, since this is televised, what the three designations mean?
Yeah. Three designations, urban, and again, this is a 50-year timeframe, so we're looking at 2060. It's hard to forecast that far in the future, but that's what we're doing. So, the three designations are urban, which means that that really is the first step to bringing an area into any city's urban growth boundary. And once it's brought into the urban growth boundary, then it has the possibility of being annexed and brought into the city. A second category is undesignedated. That means it's not urban, it's not rural, and those areas cannot be brought into the urban growth boundary until all urban areas are brought in. So, the chances of an undesignedated area being brought in are pretty slim over that 50-year time period.
So, the most restrictive designation is rural reserve for a reason. It helps to preserve farm and forest land and natural resource areas in particular.
That's correct.
Okay. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments? I guess my one question to you would be, because this is the first time we've discussed it, I think, at this table, I believe, I would recommend that we hold the -- I would like us to make a recommendation, so that it becomes official, even though the county will likely, well, will have made one before our next meeting, but I would like to hold it open for a citizen comment until our next meeting, that I see head nods around, so.
Wait, excuse me, hold what?
Hold the decision. If we pass a resolution, say we, this is the official position of Oregon City, I would like to do that after we have an opportunity for citizens to --
Right, today.
Well, I think I'm, well, we need to make a, this will be, this likely will be our preliminary recommendation to the county, because we --
I mean, today for citizens' con.
We can do it today and the next meeting, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Right, both times. But for us to take a vote, I think, I would like hold over till the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any comments? Before, we do have a citizen who signed up to speak, Christine Kozinski. You might be wanting to talk to us about Holly Lane.
Yes.[1534.25][1534.25](laughter)
I'm just clairvoyant.
Maybe I should be Christine Holly. Before I start, can you clarify?
For the record, I think you need to introduce --
Okay, Christine Kozinski, unincorporated Clackamas County. Before I begin, will you clarify the comment period? Can we comment on all of the U6 and U8 area, or are we?
You're not restricted. I mean, I think anything that's --
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, you're not restricted to anything.
Okay. Then I will begin. I applaud Oregon City, and I appreciate you for upgrading your landslide regulations, but they still aren't strict enough. I wish that you would look at the city of Salem and Marion County, where FEMA wrote the policy. There, they look at, they regulate slopes of 10% to 20% or more, and each slope is graded by a point system. I can tell you where I live, my land is slightly sloped. It still moves. Half of my garden, in the last 20 years, is now over the canyon. The canyon is going to reclaim its land, so please consider that. And Mayor Norris, I applaud your environmental safeguards for Newell Canyon and for the creeks. But how are we going to do this? I want you to think about the proposed average daily trips that you want to put down Redland Road and Holly Lane. When you consider Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, Park Place Concept Plan, the rivers, the Cove, Thayer Estates, Walnut Grove, Crabtree Terrace, when I add all that up, I come to about 127,000 ADTs per day down the roads that we have now. Where's your transportation plan? Because I'll tell you, without one, me and all the other people on Holly Lane are going to fight being included as an urban reserve until you begin to address the terrible traffic issues on the street. And it's not fair to buy these people out at bottom price and ask them to move just because you don't want to build any more roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to note, we are updating our transportation system plan, I think, starting this year.
It just would be nice to know that before these decisions are made, because the people on Holly Lane don't understand it.
Yeah. Thank you. And I think, just a comment again, is that even with these designations, nothing changes. We still go through the same, exactly the same process that we have. Well, I guess something's changed, the --
More rigorous process.
More rigorous process, yeah. Any other comments from the public?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, Holly, yeah, sorry. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Paul Edgar, Land use Chair, Kanema Neighborhood Association. As we look out at urban and rural reserves and rural lands designations, one of the most important issues that I think we need to take a look at is even including, when we factor in this 1.5% growth factor, where are these people going to work? What are the impacts on I-205, Holly Lane, Redland Road, all of the intersections, and the down impacts downstream because McLaughlin Boulevard threw Highway 99? So, one of the key elements that I perceive that needs to be reviewed, really thought about, is jobs lands, job lands, creating them, industrial lands. And one of the issues that was brought up today and by the Planning Commission -- And one of the issues that was brought up today in the, by the planning commission is the Kanema area, the little isthmus coming right there. This area has enormous job potential, job land creation potential. It is consistent with sustainability thinking. When we start adding all of these houses and all of these dwelling units and do not plan in aggressively job lands, we are cutting our throat. We are being inconsistent with any sustainable process or thinking, period. So I strongly recommend not only that land, but looking as a really, you know, maybe there's only 150 acres of flat land. If you're going towards Canby, just next to Kanema, where it has historical uses for industrial, there's an old kind of half-assed, excuse me, abandoned motel, but there's some areas through there, but ODOT's got its lands, everybody is down through there, so it's really underutilized land. It's way below its potential, but it's historically been used industrially. It makes common sense that if you want to add all of this population, and you don't have the money to fund all of the roads, we have never prioritized solving the problems of the congestion on I-205. It's not on any STIP document saying that we're going to try to correct the congestion level, i.e. funding or allocation or even thinking about it. So we're landlocking ourselves, and so if we are, we should be looking at where we're going to put these people to work, and it's not going to be all campus industrials like along Beaver Creek or along some of those areas out there. We've got to look at the potential. So I strongly endorse the connection that could be made. It's got sewer, water, and plus, Tony even brought it up, if you want to develop South End Road, some of that area, you cannot go up South End Road because it's weight restricted because of slide zone. So you can't look at it as an access route. So what you have to do is you really should take a look at how you're going to come up through this area and create a potential secondary road that will open up some of the hilltop.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, and part of the recommendations will be looking at job creation numbers, lands that either will be able to take industrial or commercial designations and jobs. Any other comments on this before we move on? Okay, thank you. It's actually...
Are you talking about moving on the agenda or moving on this item?
Yes, I'm talking about moving on the agenda.
I do, actually.
Okay.
I would like to get some direction from you and from the commission on the September 23rd meeting, as I will be attending in your absence. Is there any guidance you want to provide for my presence there on that day, or just go there with big ears and report back?
The meeting he's talking about is the first one before the Regional Urban Reserves and Rural Reserves Committee will make a decision. It's an all-day meeting where Washington County, Clackamas County, and Multnomah County will both defend their positions and ask really crucial questions, like, where will the jobs go, where will the transportation money come from, and why does Washington County believe they need 34,000 acres of urban reserves? And Clackamas County has only designated 8,400 acres of urban reserves. So there will be arguments over, how did you apply the factors? And why didn't you apply the factors? And how come Multnomah County is only taking a tiny, tiny little bit of urban reserve, Multnomah County? So I think for most of that, you need to use your own good brain. And listen.
Doug, you know what?
And I think what you'll find in almost every case is that representatives of Clackamas County will be rather unified and speak much like the conversation you've heard this evening. And you'll hear that the representatives of Washington County will speak in a, rather, together as well, but the rhetoric and the conversation will be very different. I think what I would recommend also is that you take the conversations that we had, that actually, in the morning, we'll be phoning the county commissioners to kind of update them on our discussion, and that's the Oregon City position, essentially unofficially, that we're taking citizen input and hope to make a recommendation, which will likely be close to what we're kind of looking at.
Good, thank you.
That would be my, any other wisdom? Yes, Commissioner Neely?
No, no particular other wisdom. I mean, you heard some of the other ideas that have been expressed, and we have not made a decision, but I think she's right. It was a rather brief session, but actually, I think everybody got the feeling as to what was going on. Allison and I have been very much involved, but I think the presentation and discussion was such that we really covered the areas of concern, and I think you'd be able to address that. Now, you're suggesting then we move on to the next agenda item, is that correct?
Yes, I am, as soon as everyone says their piece.
I'm going to make a request, because we're not going to have Mr. Sullivan around that long, and we can always get the answer later. But an issue did come up, and I wanted Mr. Sullivan to address it. And that was state forestry restrictions that apply in terms of forest land as it applies to municipal jurisdictions versus county jurisdictions.
That's correct. It was about the 1983 legislature that adopted a timber company proposal that said, once counties designate land as forest land, that designation stays in place, but the ability to regulate forest uses on forest lands is preempted, and only the State Forest Practices Act deals with those uses. That does not apply within cities.
Ooh.
So...
So how does, what's the application within cities, then?
Yeah, it's fairly free. Cities can, but are not required to have forest lands. Some cities do. Forest Park, of course, is in the city of Portland.
Wilsonville, I believe, does too.
Right. And so the issue is, are you within or without a city? If you're without a city, then I think the ability to regulate forest uses, cutting, et cetera, is deprived.
Now, do you, offhand, know whether the designation of what is forest land, does that designation apply to the lands in Newell Creek Canyon as forest land? Do you have any idea?
If Newell Creek Canyon is within the city, it is not.
No.
Then it's really up to the county to do the initial designation, and the county has an acknowledged plan. I don't know what that designation is. Perhaps one of you do.
Is, no, I don't believe we do, because we had to talk about it earlier, but is that not done by individual property owner requests?
No. It is done initially on a countywide basis, and has been done by the county in the acknowledged plan. Then thereafter, individuals make petition for changing of the plan designation.
Okay.
We could have that information at the next meeting.
Yeah, let's do that. And the individual city, then, we can allow forest land to be continued as forest land.
Yes, if you also get designation, sorry, the power to regulate as well, which counties don't have.
Okay. Actually, I'd like to talk about one more little piece that Tony Conkle, one of our senior planner, told me. Actually, you can speak yourself, if you might mind coming. You mentioned a county practice. One of the things that we're wrestling with as we look at this are that the edges designating as we designate a rural, urban reserve, not just drawing a line on a ridge, but using the property line, because you told me about a practice where a property owner might go to the assessor's office and maybe has a 10-acre parcel and wants this, two acres for the house, and eight in forestry land. Explain.
So what we see is, when we start bringing some of these county pieces into the city through annexations and whatnot, is it gets a little confusing, because we refer to both of them as tax lots. A taxing lot for taxing purposes, which regulates what your tax rate is, versus a tax lot for building purposes. So what can happen is, you can go to the tax assessor, and I'm not sure if this just recently changed, but historically, you could go to the tax assessor with a description of your property and have it recorded. And thereby, you could have a 10-acre piece of property, you could record a new deed and legal description, and you would now have an eight-acre taxing lot and a two-acre taxing lot. And let's say you had a house on the front lawn and forest in the back, you would get two different tax rates, one for the house and one for farm and forest land. What happens is, let's just say that 10 acres now comes into the city, and on all the tax maps, it shows up as two lots, when it has not gone through an actual land use process to be subdivisioned and create two tax lots for building purposes. So this is where we were really concerned about drawing lines for the rural and urban reserves across properties and not matching up with the property line, because in essence, what the property owner would probably do is say, well, you know, I've got this urban, I've got this urban designation on my front five acres, and I've got no designation on my rear five acres, I'm just going to go to the tax assessor and record a lot, because I can't do anything with the ones in the back. And it just, it creates multiple land use issues that will continue down the road, especially the worst-case scenario is someone goes to the tax assessor, records a new taxing lot, and then sells it. And then that person who bought the property comes in to build a home, and we don't actually have a build of a lot, because it's never gone through the partition process.
Let me add to that.
Mr. Sullivan, yes.
I generally agree with Tony. You can't do it by deed, because the recorder won't accept it. But you can go to the assessor and ask for your property to be divided into different tax lots. And of course, when you look at this for planning purposes, you're going to see the tax lots. You're not going to see what the underlying ownerships are. And many local governments have something called consolidation, where they say, if you've got multiple tax lots, we're only going to recognize one that meets the minimum lot size requirements. So the fact that you might have divided your property into two-acre parcels, and you had a five-acre minimum, doesn't mean that you can divide those lands into two-acre parcels.
Oh, interesting, okay. Well, thank you. I think these are all useful pieces of knowledge. So we'll talk about it again. Commissioner West?
Before we wrap this up, so I'm, the only thing we didn't, okay, when we started out this evening, you had some recommended changes, and Doug had some recommended changes or ideas, but the one thing that was not spoken about previously was, I believe, the area in Kanema. So is that new information that we would like to pass on to Commissioner Nocita when he goes forth?
Well, I think what we said is the planning department was going to take a closer look at that area.
And then we're going to wait for staff...
For consideration, yeah, for consideration is either undesignedated or possibly urban.
I think the view was, we need to know more, there certainly was interest in it, we need to know more about it.
Okay.
And I don't think we were...
There was some differing opinion, honestly.
Yeah, there were differing opinions, as well as, I mean, I think we just didn't know exactly what we were talking about, so let's just hold off on that. Because the vote, I don't, these lands aren't actually going to be locked in, I don't think, until, is it early next year, or is it actually in October?
I think December is the...
Is it December the final date?
Yeah.
So I believe that we'll be able to do tweaking in the planning departments, we'll be looking at lot lines and that kind of thing, so I think we still have opportunity. Any other comments, questions, or pieces of knowledge? Great, let's go ahead, then, to 6B, which is the, a second reading. For an ordinance amending the city's comprehensive plan map and zoning map and approving a four-lot subdivision for a property within the Caulfield Place subdivision and identified as Clackamas County map, 2S, 2E, 9CC, tax lots 9,898, 90. Is there any new information from staff?
No.
Okay, then may I have a motion for adoption of the second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith for the second reading. Mr. Sullivan?
This is ordinance number 09-1005, an ordinance amending the city's comprehensive plan map from low-density residential to high-density residential in Title 17, zoning Chapter 17.06.030 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code, from R10 single-family dwelling district to R2 multifamily dwelling district, for the property identified as Clackamas County map, 3S, 2E, 9CC, tax lot 9,800, and approving a four-lot subdivision on the properties identified as Clackamas County map, 3S, 2E, 9CC, tax lots 9,800 and 9,890.
Thank you. Is there public comments?
Yes. This is just a reading. This is second reading.
Second reading. No, we can take public comment. Yes, we may.
Just a comment, and perhaps just as a point of clarification.
Yes.
My name is William Gifford, and I'm speaking now, this is a citizen. But I did attend a presentation that was given to the neighbors that were notified within the 300-foot boundary of this property. And it was sort of billed as a neighborhood association meeting, but of course, at that time, we did not have the Caulfield Neighborhood Association in place. There was quite a bit of confusion in that meeting, and there was some very interesting information that came, I just was surprised at some of the information that came out of that meeting, and I don't know if all of the issues had been resolved regarding those concerns by the neighbors.
Yes, Mr. Conkle.
When was this meeting held? Was this recently?
This was, I'm trying to guess, three weeks ago.
I think we're confusing two different projects here. I think that the meeting they just held is for a project to be submitted.
Okay.
They held their neighborhood meeting months ago concerning this application that they're considering tonight.
Okay. Again, I didn't see which one it was, and I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we do expect that the development community will meet with, affected neighborhood, it's always the plan, so, and it usually is well in advance, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other concerns, questions? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Neely.
I'd like to, at a future study session, discuss two things. One is to develop code language that would prevent the building of exposed sewer pipes. And the second one is to have staff, half-staff, sorry about that, have staff come up with remedies to have the current exposed pipe in some way, I was going to say camouflage, but really, what we can do in terms of having a pedestrian bridge built over the exposed pipe, for two items to be discussed at a study session.
Okay. Staff, any clarification of that? Got it? Okay, thank you. Next, we move on to an item for discussion, and that is an item suggested by Commissioner Neely and Commissioner Nocita, the task force on habitat enhancements. Who's going to...
I will defer to the, my more experienced colleague, Commissioner Neely, to commence this discussion.
Commissioner Neely?
But first of all, I treat this basically as a discussion item, as I'm sure we'll get input from other commissioners. What we have is what we present. We actually discussed this at an Urban Renewal Agency Commission meeting. The consensus was from that group, it should come to the city commission, because what we're putting forward here really is trying to put forward a task force to deal with the deposition of sediment in front of the mouth of the Cove and the Clackamas River. How do we deal with that sediment? And I think the best way to just discuss it for the public is just to read what our goal is, a little bit editing is required there, but the goal of the task force is to enhance long-term habitat for native vertebrate and invertebrate species in the Cove and Lower Clackamas River and the riparian areas. The task force will consider a broad range of habitat enhancement opportunities. One key focus of this effort would be to identify methods to control, in a manner beneficial to habitat, the disposition of gravel and sediments in the Clackamas River at the opening and downstream of the Clackamas Cove, in a manner that would, one, permit long-term access of Clackamas County's marine patrol from its moorage in the Cove to both the upper and lower Clackamas River and into the Willamette River, both upstream and downstream of the confluence for the Clackamas River, and, two, to permit long-term river traffic through the Lower Willamette River from its confluence with the Columbia River through the Willamette Falls locks, of both recreational and commercial boats of a size that can be accommodated by Willamette Falls locks.
If I might comment on process here, it's usually our process that we discuss things at work session. I'm wondering if it... I'm wondering if it would be possible that we could put our questions on the table today and then have an opportunity?
No problem.
Perfect.
No, it's fine.
Okay. So, how about it?
Okay.
Commissioner West?
Well, first of all, I would like to work towards the success of your ideas. And the question is just how we do it. So for, okay, we'll just start off a task first versus an advisory committee. So how long is this going to take? Since we are thinking that the permitting will continue on into infinity, that this is not just a task force, this is a kind of a permanent, long-range idea. So, let me, whoops, glasses back on.
So one question, how long?
So the length of it. And when you, when you showed us, or you have a suggested list of partners, why would, so would this be Oregon Cities Committee and why would everybody want to be an Oregon Cities Committee when there are other cities? So I'm just saying, what would give us the jurisdiction of it, other than the Cove? But when you talk about the mouth of the Clackamas and the Willamette, so that's a question. And would federal and state agencies, would that be a conflict of interest for them if they're commenting on a project during the day or in a professional setting? Do they come together in an advisory setting after work to share a different opinion or the same opinion? So, another one, if the mayor, if it is an advisory committee, doesn't the mayor point to advisory committees? If this is an advisory committee, does it become a new program because it would need staffing? And we've had a little controversy among ourselves here on public records, public note, you know, would need minutes, and then a retention policy, public notice. So how would we pay for that? I'm not thinking urban renewal, but bylaws would have to be set up. And then is, you know, we sit up here and take public comment for all the land use processes that we go through, what kind of public process would take place for your opinions or this committee's opinions on land use things? For instance, where the sediments would go, or what kind of restoration project you would be having? So I want to know the public process there. And who does the results of the work go to? Does it go to NOAA? Does it go to the State Marine Board? Does it go to West Lynn? Does it, who gets the results and who analyzes the results and who determines what the results, whose opinions is the priority? So who evaluates the work? And this is, you have suggested a really broad task force, but you've also suggested a really broad geographic area. And you also have a park in there, you have private land, McDonald's is at the mouth there, and Clackamas Park, you have Dahl Park in Gladstone. So is the public process the same for all of them? And how do you account for differing ownerships? And how would it interface, you know, so how does it interface between public, private parks? And I think that must be about it. I think I asked a lot.
You did.
But there's lots to think of, lots to think of. Oh, I want to say one more, one more thing. And, you know, we've had a natural resource committee before that fell apart because of these kinds of things. It did not have its scope of work defined and what kind of, you know, and how the results would be implemented. So you get people frustrated being asked to serve on a committee that they really don't have any jurisdiction to control the results. So I think all these things really are valid points. And I'd like to ensure your success.
First of all, it is not recommended to be an advisory committee, it is recommended to be a task force. And I don't think it's necessary for the mayor to make appointments. Even if that were the case, this is a recommended, a proposed list of members. The reason that we have rather an extensive list is for the very reasons you're talking about. It is a multi-jurisdictional issue. The, I visualize it as basically making a determination, when dredging occurs, how can that material be used to meet those three basic objectives? Enhancing fish wildlife habitat, permitting transportation on the Clackamas River, permitting transportation on the Willamette River. Those are multi-jurisdictional concerns and is one of the major reasons that we've listed so many jurisdictions as members of the task force.
Right.
Now, the task, I don't think the task force is going to come up with anything other than an assessment of what is possible in the use of the material.
Okay, I think this whole discussion, but I think you, in my view, you need to focus on, I do it, she's very much more eloquent than I will, but what is the problem you're trying to solve? To me, it's unclear. I think what you just said made it more clear to me. So what is the problem you're trying to solve and what does the success look like? To me, those are real basic, and I don't quite, I don't quite get to that. So I think those are pretty easy probably to answer.
I guess, I guess I have a problem with your statement. I think it's certainly clearly stated there. They may need some reas, I really stated it.
Well, no, you just said something about dredging, and on here, there's nothing about dredging, so I'm.
Well, you've restoration and dredging.
The disposition of gravels and sediments in the Clackamas River at the opening of the downstream of the Clackamas Cove is specifically stated there.
It says one key, one key focus.
And I can give some background on that because in my discussions with Commissioner Neely.
Actually, you want to, let's just, that's actually, in the interest of time, since we don't have research on, if you don't mind, if we just put the questions on the table and then, then you guys can know how to clarify them when we have our next discussion. That would be great. Any other questions to put on the table?
All right.
Got it?
Well, we look forward to continuing the discussion at a work session. And like I said, I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to do this. Those are just my questions.
All right.
We should have good notes on that, too. Okay, thank you. Next. Item on the agenda is the Carnegie Center process and a personal services agreement with Cogan Owens Cogan for, for that. And Scott Archer, I assume that you are the staff person on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Norris and Commissioner. The recommendation is for the approval of a personal services agreement with Cogan Owens Cogan for the consultant services of the Carnegie Center public input process. The background on this is that the commission previously discussed this and directed staff to seek consultant services for this process to help us in determining the future use of the Carnegie Center. Staff advertised a request for proposals. We had three firms that responded. We had an evaluation of these proposals, including interviews. And out of that process, the firm of Cogan Owens Cogan was selected and is recommended to you. The contract here would include the process of forming and meeting with the public task force, backgrounding and research on the Carnegie Center, its potential uses, et cetera. Lots of public outreach and public input, that would be the, really the meat of this process. And then preparations of the final recommendation and report that would be given to the commission at the end of this process. So the outcome is that a pretty extensive public process would occur, and the recommendations would be presented. The purpose of the consultant really is to help facilitate and guide that process. Cogan Owens Cogan has a significant amount of public process experience, that's really what their firm does. The amount of this contract would be for $18,480. I would note that this was not an anticipated expenditure in the budget process specifically, though we had discussed it, we weren't certain about what the process was going to be. Therefore, we are recommending funding this item out of the general fund contingency in that amount. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Scott, I think it was interesting to me, and I don't think you said, that you actually sent out the RFP without an amount on it. Is that correct?
Right.
And then, so the consultants each had to talk about what they would do and what they anticipate the costs to be?
That was, that's correct. And that was kind of an intentional thing and kind of by necessity. For one, as I said, we didn't budget specifically for it, so we didn't have a developed budget. And that was what we told the consultants. But it also helped us just to basically make this proposal and an open slate for them to tell us what they think the process would be, because frankly, we weren't certain what type of process. That's, these are the, you know, that's the idea, is that we really wanted to hone this down to finding the consultants that put together a proposal that gave us good input, because frankly, we weren't, we weren't positive what that public process and what that would look like. And that, that's really what we got out of it, was a good product, you know, a good proposal. And I should note, the fees that were proposed ranged from this amount of $18,480 up to about $29,000. So this was at the, this was the lowest cost proposal. That's not specifically why we chose this. They had what we thought was the best proposal, but it also happens to be that it was the least expensive of the proposals.
Questions or comments?
I do have a couple, well, more than a couple. I think I'll pause as I group them so people can comment on them. Since this is, this is a request for a proposal, they have a proposal here. First of all, I am impressed with the group. They, in many ways, they dealt with more contention with the Park Place concept plan than we actually had in the Beaver Creek concept plan. And boy, they were able to pull together major discussions in terms of steep slopes and everything else in that process. I think they did a great job there. I see there are also the group that was responsible for Liberty Plaza Charette, which I look for things that we knew something about. And so it appears to be a group that we've had experience, I say very positive, experience with. I do want to make some, the project approach that's put forward here and make a couple of comments. I think this is something that ultimately comes back to the commission, and I think it's indicated here that that is the case. But I would like, right after task one and after a final project scope is put together for the commission to look at that scope, if we, if we have input into it, I think it ought to be early on in the process, rather than us getting into something that's, you know, so well-developed and us having some issues with it at that point. I think the best, the best time to have it presented is at that point. That's my first comment.
So you, so what you're really asking for is to look at the contract?
I don't know. No, 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 no.
Would you include the scope of work?
No. It's step one. In the project scope, there's step one is project kickoff, and the deliverables is the final project scope and budget. I would like to look at that project scope after they developed it. Have that presented to the commission.
Do they have that until the end of the project?
No, no, they have it on task one.
That's step one.
Look on page four.
Task one.
They'll meet with a project manager, see this project manager and other staff representatives to agree on the scope of work, budget rules and responsibilities, desired outcomes.
And you, at that point.
What Commissioner Neely asked for is really, you look at that before we sign off on that final scope.
Right.
Right. The comment I have in terms of the public task force, I don't, I personally don't believe our, our department should be represented, our department staff should be represented in the task force. What we do have, and I think is very appropriate, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisor Committee as part of the task force. Since we're talking about also library professionals, I would suggest the library board also be included in the task force. But for the same, for the same reason that I usually suggest that we don't have commission members, I think it's better for us not to have staff members there. And as part of the task force, they can make comments to what the task force are talking about, but I think there's a tendency for the other people to defer to comments that they might be making. And I don't think that's what we want. We want something that's really from the ground up on this kind of thing.
Do you want Commissioner there?
No. No.
Commissioner Neely, on that point, if I could, at a commission work session recently, we were discussing this process starting to go forward in terms of looking for the consultant and so forth. I did get feedback from you on some of your thoughts and ideas as to what groups or organizations or what have you should be represented on that. And I do want you to know that that has been, that's been taken into account and will be given to the consultant as the process goes forward, that here's what the commission has already discussed based on your previous conversation. So I just want you to know, we'll make sure that that previous direction from the commission gets included in this. That may not have been reflected in their, in their proposal because they didn't necessarily have that information.
Okay.
Next.
Those, I think those are the major features that I spotted here that I guess I would like to see build into it.
Commissioner West?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Doug, because I just wanted to make sure that everyone here, if there were any other partners that needed to be involved. And I couldn't think of any, but I was hoping maybe you guys did. So the friends of the library, the library board, that works for me. And then on the final recommendation, I do hope that they include budget and staffing issues, because what, how relevant is it if it's, you know, pie in the sky? And then, just for fun, well, not quite, but the last, what AKT or whoever made that last, AKS, you know, we don't want to pay $2,500 for them to present the report at the end. So I hope that the presentations.
Yeah.
That be.
Commissioner West, that's included in the scope.
Well, okay.
And the fee.
Yep.
It says, it says on the green sheet here, and recommendations to the city commission. I think we're going to be very careful about that from now on.
Okay, other comments, questions? Commissioner Nocita?
Couple of reflections and a question for Commissioner Smith. I received an information, an invitation from Commissioner Smith and a group of people he has been working with that is completely citizen-driven on the whole issue of these heritage sites. It was a meeting held at the Pioneer Center. And I attended it and I was just totally impressed by the, the level of passion and commitment by the people who were in attendance. Because it was kind of self-organized and people wanted to go there and share ideas because of their love of the subject matter. The organic nature of the way that group came together seems to me an ideal way to have something like this facilitated. And because Commissioner Smith had been closer to the whole matter than I have, I would want to get his insights and advice on, do you see that group as a group that could work in place of a process like this? Are they complementary? Could we save money by not spending 18 and a half thousand by just having this, it does seem rather experimental, having a self-organized process like that. But I must say, I was impressed with the first meeting that I went to, and I'm just wondering how you feel as someone who was involved with organizing that effort, how you feel that that group and that process can work to address some of the topics that this task force or this public input process with this consultant's firm, you know, would address the issue?
Well, I do kind of think, well, it's so new. This group is so new and they have only had one meeting. They're going to have one meeting coming up on the 22nd. And it's so broad. It's a very broad focus. Do I think the Carnegie and some of the other aspects of things in the city probably will come into that discussion? But I don't necessarily know that that group would tackle something that specific. I think that that group would definitely have discussions and want to have input into a process. But I, but I think the general feel of that group is much broader than that. I think that's.
They could be part of the process.
Well, yeah, I definitely think that, I mean, that, a representative group like that, if it does form, it's not quite, I mean, it's not actually formalized group, it's working on that, I think, if that's going somewhere. But that might. But that might be another stakeholder in this as well. But I don't necessarily see that group driving something specifically like the Carnegie Center. I think they would kind of work together, same with like the CIC and stuff like that.
I see staff support would be missing too. We'd have to pay for it. Commissioner Neely.
There was one point that I failed to make. McLaughlin Neighborhood Association is listed as a potential task force member, and then we have the CIC also. I would suggest that the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, if it would have a seat, that we look for the CIC to appoint to actually a non-McLaughlin Neighborhood Association member. To make sure we've got more, a non-McLaughlin Neighborhood Association member to give a broader, a broader city perspective from the groups of neighborhood associations. I think it's fine that McLaughlin's brought out specifically because it's in the neighborhood, but I think we need to make sure we get other neighborhood representatives and other neighborhood association.
Maybe. Got Commissioner Nocita?
Because I think Commissioner West brought it up, I think more in the context of the habitat task force. And I think Scott Archer may have alluded to it in his discussion of the source of this funding. I just want to address the question head-on is the relationship of this funding to the fire annexation pledge. Would this be a new program?
It's in our goals. It's not a program yet. Let's see, how does that go?
We're looking at Mr. Patterson for an answer. This one I defer.
You know what he's going to say.
Well, I'm, see, again, Larry and I have gone back and forth on what's a program, what's a start, a restart of a dormant program, too, is that new? And your take is, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Sullivan say, maybe?
Depends. Depends.
Yeah, it depends. You really could, I mean, it's how you want to see the Carnegie, it's really what comes out the end of that in terms of what you do with it, whether that's an extension. And I think that really gets down to if you're looking at something that's different in terms of the use and that budgetary cost is greater than what you've been paying for that, then you probably have something to discuss. If it's within that framework, you could probably do it.
Commissioner West.
Well, maybe I should put the question back on Commissioner Nocita. Do you have any other suggestions on how we can do this then? I mean, I'm certainly willing to save $18,000 on another consultant and save more time and more stalling, but we somehow can't seem to arrive at solutions to some of these big facility issues. So I'm game, but.
If I'm right, if I'm right, one very distinct situation here, it's not a new facility.
No, it's not a new facility, but.
And it's an unused facility.
I understand that. It's been sitting here empty way too long.
Likely it will be into the next budget year by the time we get to a.
I don't think the analysis of what you do with something is a new program. I think it's really what you end up with the end result, then you'll have to have something to look at.
That's when the verbal really hit the road. Okay. Happy for us?
This has become more of a tough nut than I thought it was when first reading the agenda.
Yeah, no, it's a problem in need of a solution, and this is one way to get to it. So may I have a motion?
You'll have a motion.
Commissioner Neely.
My motion is to approve a personal services agreement with Kogan Owens' program to provide consultancy services for the Carnegie Center public input process.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner West. Is there further comment or discussion? Nancy, vote please.
Commissioner Neely.
Hi.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Help.
Top one.
I really don't know how to vote on this. I'm going to vote no.
And Mayor Norris. Aye. Motion passes four one. Okay, next. We have a facility grant agreement for sport craft boat ramp replacement, another project from the community services department. Scott Archer.
Thank you again, Mayor Norris and Commission. I'm recommending and requesting your approval and authorization of the facility grant cooperative agreement number 1402 with the Oregon State Marine Board for $166,255 for funding towards the replacement of the sport craft boat ramp. I would note to you that this is one of two funding agreements that will be brought forward to you. Unfortunately, the timing is that we have to bring this one forward first. We've actually received, we applied for about $320,000 total. This is basically about half of that, and we'll receive the other half through another funding source. It's actually some federal funding that has passed down through the Marine Board, which we've already received notification that we've received. But the grant agreement for that won't come for a little bit, we'll come a little bit further down the road. But we do need, we've been asked to approve this agreement even though we don't have the other yet. So as you know, we've been talking about the replacement of the sport craft boat ramp for some time, and we finally do have the funding in place to do that pending these agreements. We would be looking at, because of permitting issues that slowed us down a bit, we'd be looking at, once we get the funding in place, doing this project during the in-water work period in 2010 in the summer. So we're looking at basically next summer to do this. We have, as I said, we've received a total of about $320,000 towards a project total of about $420,000. We've budgeted, through the city budget, $100,000 matched towards this grant, but we've received excellent support to do this project from the Marine Board. The visual up on the screen is actually the, what would be, again, this is a bit of a technical plan, but what would be the replacement for the current boat ramp that we have there. There are really two major benefits. One is just the use of that ramp and the state of disrepair that it's in right now. So it improves that. We've got problems with trailers going off the end of a, kind of what is basically a drop-off where pavement ends and problems with people getting stuck and those types of things. And two, this project actually greatly improves our usability there in that it goes from basically one lane of a boat launch to two. And so I'm going to try to not shoot Dan in the eyes with my laser beam. What you're looking at is the site plan, going right down the middle is the loading dock where you step on and load onto the boat. These two lanes, there are two lanes, one on each side of that, that are the launch lanes. And in comparison with our current situation, we've got a dock off to the side and just one big launch lane down the middle. It's actually supposed to be big enough for two, but people don't really, I think, utilize it that way. So this actually makes it more practical and easier for people to recognize that they've got two separate launch lanes. So it's a great improvement in that regard as well.
So the footprint is bigger?
No.
It's exactly the same?
It's pretty much the same. It just, this just helps basically sort of delineate that for people that they understand that better. And putting the dock down the middle helps people to understand that they can go on either side of that. There's a significant improvement in that regard. Again, with that, we're asking for your approval of this, the first of two grant award contracts.
That seems like a no-brainer, getting money. Okay? May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Neely.
It's just, when I first moved to Oregon City, I thought the ramp we had there actually belonged to Sport Craft Arena.
Yeah, I did too.
And it's, it's too bad we give that a name that actually is with a private facility there because it is in fact a public boat ramp, which I was not aware of until I'd been here for maybe four or five years. With that, I'd like to move to approve and to authorize the city manager to enter into a facility grant cooperative agreement 1402 with Oregon State Marine Board for $166,255 for funding toward the replacement of the quote "sport craft" unquote boat ramp.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there any other comment? Commissioner Nocita?
Commissioner West got me on this.
Not what I do.
Again, I guess, out of consistency, is this, would this be considered something that is new?
Yeah, I'll start with that.
No. Has this been?
It's a budgeted item.
Yeah, it's a budgeted item.
It's maintenance of an existing facility, really. That's my opinion.
And we haven't stopped doing maintenance. Okay? Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, didn't mean to be short. The vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Hi.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And I want to thank you and your staff, Scott, for getting grants like this, which enables us to do this kind of work, money outside of Oregon City. It's great.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank, in particular, on this project, Denise Kai. She's really worked hard to help us get this funding lined up.
Thank you, Denise Kai. Okay, the next one is Resolution 9-22, which initiates the vacation of a section of Fisher Avenue. And I see that Bob Cullison is going to give us the staff report. Bob?
Very short and sweet, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We have a new subdivision that happens to be Colacumus Community Land Trust, putting in some much-needed homes, affordable homes on, just off Morton Road. They're going to be building out Fisher, which is not built out at all right now. It's an old right-of-way that's 60 feet wide, and our normal now is 53 feet wide. So it's an extra width that they desperately need to get another lot, actually two lots, out of the project. So we fully support this and just ask that you go ahead and approve this resolution to initiate it, and we'll come back and formalize the ordinance at the next meeting.
Great. This is the Juneberry subdivision. I believe there's actually going to be a groundbreaking. Is it tomorrow?
On the 23rd.
Next week, I believe.
Next week, okay, great. Questions about this project or a motion?
He answered the only question I had.
Neely? Okay, and how about a motion?
He answered it, so I don't have to ask.
Oh, I'll move.
All right, Commissioner West.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 09-22, the initiation of the vacation of a section of Fisher Avenue and authorizing the mayor and city were recorded to execute it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment? Seeing none, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Neely.
Hi.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. And last, we have the minutes of the joint work session of July 7th. How about motion for adoption, please?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Nocita. On the minutes, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Hi.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. That concludes our business agenda. So we'll move into communications and beginning with our city manager, Mr. Patterson.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, we've had a request from Edwards Air Force Base to use our trolleys in an airshow. And again, it's one of those things that we would price out the cost of that as trolleys and drivers. And they inquired whether we're interested in doing that, and I told Ms. Bush to indicate to them that we are pending if the commission had any issues with that or not. I've chatted with a couple of you. I know that Commissioner Neely wants to make sure that we let them know that we also have their plat when they go down there, but I'm a little bit worried.
That comes at a higher cost than the trolleys.
Yeah, they have jet planes and bombs, so I was a little bit worried about them too angry.
No, no, you're looking at it all wrong. This is in the form of a compensation for us having their plat.
Ah, okay. Yeah, I'll stand corrected then. The issue is, if you don't have any qualms about that, we can make arrangements. Again, we'll want to make sure that all of our costs are covered in doing that. I don't know if they're planning on shipping them down or flying them down or what the program is, but it will be good exposure for Oregon City.
Wow, that's great.
They want two.
Okay.
But that's up, unless you have issues, we'll try to make arrangements here, we'll work things out.
Are there any questions or concerns about it?
What do they want to use the trolleys for?
An airshow.
They're parachuting.
They're going to bomb them.
Yeah, parachutes, I think, aren't they?
Okay.
Do you have further?
I have a couple of other things. You need to.
No, just before we go, this is going to be in a period of time when we have minimal or no use of the trolleys.
Yeah, this is during the winter months when we close it down. Again, and we do rent trolleys out to groups. This is just kind of an unusual question, we're bringing this to you, it's a little out of the area.
I'm going to put, if they do that, they take all responsibilities in terms of any accident that may happen.
Oh, yeah.
So you've got all of that taken care of.
It's actually our program, how we replace them, get newer models.
Yeah.
League of Oregon Cities is around the corner, and once again, we're being asked for you to designate your city voting delegate to the league conference, so.
Would Commissioner West consent to be our delegate, since you are involved in the planning and?
It means you've got to stay the last day and attend the breakfast.
What'd you say?
You have to attend the breakfast, that's when the voting is.
On Saturday?
Yeah.
I'll be there, I have a session at 10:00.
Okay, great. Any objections to that?
No.
Is everybody going to tell me how to vote?
Who's all planning on attending the league? Are all of you? Good.
Also, too, at your last meeting, you had approved the resolution in regards to the wastewater treatment capacity advisory board, which, and we need to, you need to designate your alternate to that committee.
You're sending.
I'm, our representative.
I'd be glad to be your backup. Is that, is that okay?
Okay.
The wastewater team.
It's staff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty technical.
And just want to bring to your attention that tonight is Mr. Sullivan's last meeting for the next nine months. He's going to disappear into the hinterlands for a while and come back enlightened.
Okay, we're going to all say ah. One, two, three. Ah.
Be sure to write. Feel the love.
You know, you could be patched through with conference call.
Yeah, we'll look forward to his return.
Great, thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
Under Commissioner Communications, I would like to appoint Mike Mitchell to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the term beginning today to the end of the year in 2011. And before your eyes glaze over, I'm going to be first, if I might. You have at your place, as I emailed to, but I don't know if you all had a chance to see, and I apologize for this being late, but an idea that I'm putting on the table after discussions with Linda Bell for revisioning tourism. And this is in response to the new site that we own, or have now, or will on October 10th, the Abernathy Green Site. So I would like to, you all have it?
I don't.
It was at your place, it looks like this, if you don't have it.
Wasn't it in my binder?
Yeah. It's not in there.
Go ahead, take that. Take that. I have a, an extra?
Oh, yeah, I put it in there. Yes, excuse me.
You'll have it?
I stuck it in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, everyone has it, okay. You know that you gave me permission to talk with Linda Bell, who, the other thing that you should have received, oh, yeah, we have it right back here, is after that first page, which I developed, you have the task force report that the Colacumus County Tourism Development Council authorized. It was a committee that looked at visitor information services. And I'm going to kind of review in the light of the fact that they have actually put a stamp of approval on it. And they went through a process looking at places where visitor services could be changed, enhanced, whatever, because visitor information service facilities are on the decline in our country for a couple of reasons. They were very popular because they had clean restrooms. But when the public found fast food facilities, which also have good restrooms, that was one reason they dropped off. The second reason visitation has dropped off would be because we use the internet so much for our destinations and our maps and all of that stuff. So they, so visitor information services are evolving. And so I talked to you at a work session about the Destination Visitor Center. And so the proposal that Linda and I kind of came up with is very consistent with what the task force came up with. If you look on the, it must be your very last page, this is the analysis, these pages are the analyses that they did of all of the travel information places that they have to determine whether or not Oregon City really is the right spot. And you'll see that we have a lot of good things going on there, properly staffed with energetic and passionate. Properly staffed with energetic and passionate attitude, very user-friendly atmosphere, low-tech facility without desktop Internet access, which is a negative, adequate directional signage, information displays well-organized, facility in park-like setting with adequate parking for buses and personal automobiles, landscape is under-maintained, outdoor information displays in need of renovation, restrooms available, and spacious facility with great potential. So, we, as I said, will own the facility, so I'm going to talk about its current state in that it is currently staffed by contract with the former Clackamas Heritage Partners to the end of the year. The TDC likely will, and kind of at my questioning, will probably re-administer that contract, and one of the issues that they will have, as you see in here under Process, actually, Process Number Three, is that there will be now a big security issue in that the site will have very few people on it and a single operator. So, that's an issue. If we can help provide the security, the visitor center will remain open to the end of the year. They also need to deal with the, if they ditch the visitor center, they'd have to deal with the 1-800 number, which is widely advertised around the United States. Secondly, they've asked the city to do three things to help it remain open to the end of the year, and they believe that visitation, well, this is fact, visitation fell off rather dramatically when the visitor center closed, whenever it was, May, June, no, earlier, and then picked back up a little bit. So, to the question that we talked about at our last meeting, yes, visitors will come, they probably will be at a lower number. But anyway, they want us to check and pick up garbage, clean the restrooms, and then help facilitate payroll, which would be just-pass-through monies, and as I presented these ideas to our City Manager, Larry agreed that those are things the city could do, so again, so you can discuss all that later. Now, this, I've always talked about the fact that we need a revisioning committee, so this is the real proposal, and you'll see that we've identified slots, certainly not definitive, and if you like the idea, then, you know, we need to put suggested names beside all these, but think of this as a possibility. Oh, I need to tell you one more thing. First of all, we have five county commissioners now who likely will not want to spend one penny on heritage. We have nine TDC Board members who likely will not want to spend one penny on heritage. So, you'll see that I will use the word heritage in no place in this report, nor will I use the words "end of the Oregon Trail," nor will I use the word "CHP," because those are words of yesterday, and the new vision probably is going to be something different. So, again, this is sort of a collaborative proposal from Linda and I, revisioning tourism, an idea for Abernathy Green. So, consider that we need the support, because this likely cannot work without a partnership from the county, so this could be the beginning of bike trips in the region. That's where the mapping could be, it could be trail marks, it just starts right there at Abernathy Green.
And it goes by the McLaughlin House, and it goes by the...
Absolutely. It certainly could. A farmer's market could be there, either ours or some other kind. It could be summer, it could be winter, and by the way, I believe that the group, which shall not be named, has moved most of their things out of the facility now.
Oh, boy.
They're being very responsible about securing it, because of course, those things are very valuable, and they've found places, I believe, for all of it, including the technology that ran the movie. So, consider also, this could be an area where demonstrations of green technologies could occur. This is, could be Ticket Central, so you could buy your Lyft tickets there, it could be Guide Central, so your fishing trips, your boat trips, river rafting, climbing the Medrone Wall, all of that can happen there. It could be the first stop for history tour, heritage tours. It could have retail, a nice retail shop, and there's actually an example, I believe it's in Salem, and the Task Force could actually go down and visit that group, but they do wine tastings there, and they have a retail thing, so for instance, Benchmade Knives, a local firm, or Wine Stock could actually have a retail center there, or they give them rent space, there's all kinds of things. And then another need that Linda Bell has identified is that in some of the major employers of Clackamas County, the big ones, the big employers, there's a need for an orientation center for new employees, and to have a flat screen and a small conference center where new employees can be oriented to Clackamas County, sounds like it's got a thumbs up from some of those. So, we also, then, as you talk about process, and I don't see that it can happen, again, without a facilitator, coordinator, manager that we talked about before. Probably it's an eighty thousand dollar contract, and the job description would be, in this proposal, this would be the person that would bring the group together that we're proposing down here, and that helps develop the vision. Now, I could envision that this visioning, revisioning group could divide into two areas. They could create the vision for Clackamas County and on the site, and they could go off into two strands. It could be the group that talks about heritage and how heritage plays out in the county, and then this group would be very site-specific, which is the group I'm talking about, very site-specific to Abernathy Green, because, and then the facilitator that I think we should hire would work on that site development. So, Destination Visitor Center, I kind of defined it so that you don't have to read all the pages of what a Destination Visitor Center kind of is, but it's a new thing. Oh, I didn't mention agritourism. Agritourism is a huge...
Well, that's a good one, too.
A huge thing, from flowers to wine, to small farms, goats, animals, whatever, that could be that, too, but themed as authentically Clackamas County. Now, the revisioning committee contains, you know, I guess in my mind, it'd be all the usual suspects, but this is bigger than Oregon City. This is something that actually Travel Oregon, which is the tourism, Oregon tourism, likely would participate in. TDC, City of Oregon City, Oregon City Chamber, CIC, Clackamas Community College, business interests that might actually be involved in the retail piece. PGE is a large employer, I probably should say a large employer there, somebody in Communications. Spirit Mountain with Grand Ron Tribes have expressed interest in the site, likely they should be involved. Recreation BTA means Bicycle Transportation Authority Alliance. The surrounding communities, the development community, and because there are some developers that have expressed interest in some pieces, somebody in Finance, TriMet Metro, likely Carlotta, who's our Metro representative, someone from the heritage community, the arts community, agritourism, Main Street, economic development in the county, someone that works in sustainability movement, and then right across the street is the Amtrak Station, and we all worked with Rose Blackson as we opened up the station, and she's a dynamo with lots of, lots of really creative ideas. So, I, you, we need to figure out funding. Larry, in fact, Larry, do you have a funding possibility, you know, where this might come from? And then, the problem with all of this is that the facility will be sitting dormant, and to get anything started to capture next season, I don't know if we're, I don't know if it possibly can be ready for the next summer's season, because this is a lot of work to revision, but there could be some short-term solutions that could be income-producing, as well as long-term solutions which would require a whole bunch more. So, comments and ideas? Rocky, or Commissioner Smith, sorry, and then followed by Commissioner Neely.
I thought at our last meeting, the discussion was more about a facilities manager than a facilitator.
Yeah, it is.
Well, then, let's scratch that out, because this is not what we, that's not what we talked about.
Yeah. Manager, call.
And then I'd like Mr., I'd like Commissioner Nacita to restate his question from earlier on this subject. If he's awake.
The new program question, or the, or the where-to-get-the-money question?
The committee question that you asked me before.
Okay.
Regarding the Carnegie Center.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes, yes.
There's been a recent Citizens Committee that has met regarding this whole question of heritage, and I'm wondering if, in your opinion, that Heritage Committee might be something that we could rely on in developing a mechanism to address the question of what to do with the Abernathy Green Site.
Well, I think that might be actually very possible. That's very interesting.
As long as the committee doesn't use the word heritage.
Right. Okay, so, the reason I ask that is, that's what this group was set up for. That's, this meeting that took place a couple of weeks ago was really to start the process in having a discussion community-wide with as many people as possible to really focus on tourism and recreation and economic development and everything. So, it was a broad, broad focus, and it was a broad discussion. We, I think the hope from that group was that it would grow to larger groups, and bigger groups, and bigger groups, and bigger groups, and I think, obviously, all of those groups that are listed here would be a part of that discussion, but I don't in any way think that the revisioning committee is in any way inclusive, or exclusive of anything, or anybody, or any group.
Great.
And so, I think, rather than, so I think, you know, CIC and this, I don't even know if it has a name, Marge, I don't even, Marge is sitting there.
Heritage.
I don't even know what that group's name is, but there's many, many groups. Tour, what? Community tourism development, something? That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, really, what I'm saying is, you know, again, this is our building, this is our city, and this discussion has to be broader than this group right here, and I gotta say, I'm, I don't, I'm not really excited, you know, I definitely, at the last meeting, was interested in a discussion continuing on, but in no way was I thinking that any decisions or any kind of plans were going to be made, or anything else, without a just wide discussion throughout the whole community. And I think that these, this is already starting to get extremely narrow, and so I have some major concerns about that. It already seems like things are taking shape, and that we're already kind of talking about what the building might be used for, and who the partners are, and...
That's a...
It's way, way too, it's way too soon for that. I think it's way too soon for that. So, I really think, I feel like with our Commission as a whole, we need to have this discussion, a work session, rather than come to a meeting, say, hey, read this, and do you think this is what we should do? Because I don't know what this says, and I don't, and it's too early to even comment on it. We just got the building in our hands, and...
Well, we don't have yet, actually.
Well, okay, well, it's close. I just, this is a huge, huge, huge issue, a huge topic, and I just think we're going a bit, bit too quick.
If I could just respond, I'm putting this on the table because the TD, it's driven by the TDC, and the fact that I believe we cannot do it alone, and the partnership that we have is with the county, and the only way to build that partnership is to put together a broad-based group for discussion that has some political clout, and that Oregon City has to come to the table with some money, or they'll walk away from it, which they could easily do. And so, I, this is developed out of what the TDC direction is, and, you know, that's something we can take or leave?
Well, I just want to point out, you said this is TDC-driven.
Yeah.
I think we were very vocal in all of the last meetings that this was going to be city-driven.
Well, if you wish the site to be administered only by the city, that's a huge different, both political and financial question than a partnership thing, and I, so I think...
Well, I know, but we haven't had the discussion as a city itself, yet.
Well, okay, Commissioner West?
So, is this time-sensitive that the TDC, or that the visitor center right now is staffed by the county? So, are they saying they're going to pull the plug on that real quick here if we don't decide on something?
They'll probably keep it open if they can guarantee security and if we can provide some of these things, but it's, that's...
Do we have time to put this on a work session?
Well, certainly, that's what I envisioned, that it would go to the work session, but I think we need, we, I wanted to put it on the table now so that you could get your arms around it, and...
Just like the, okay.
Yeah, and like the other one, and to talk about, that, I think it's a very, very real concept that, you know, we're going to have to put up, quit up some money, and to have, I mean, the reality is, we don't have all that much time. If we want something, you know, ready, it doesn't do us any...
Otherwise, it'll totally close.
Yeah, it doesn't have any, it doesn't do anybody any good to have the building sitting there vacant like Carnegie Center has been for all those years, too. Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, well, first of all, I feel that Commissioner Smith is correct. We need, we need to spend some time with this ourselves. I think part of that discussion can actually, I mean, some of the ideas that were put forward here, I think are very good ideas. I think that creates possibilities for the other buildings as well, in terms of how it's presented, so I think it's, it can be a broader discussion in terms of the whole facility that develops. I do believe that we suggested the possibility of having an early meeting with the specific committee that allocates the grants from the hotel motel tax, seek money in there, so we do, we do have that one funding source that we suggested. We have to do that early on so that when we come to the grant piece, we know how much money that would be available for that, and, but we do, I think there's one, there's one funding source that we do have available to us.
Yeah, and I just, I just asked what a, you know, a manager that could put this, both the process and do the implementation when the vision is created, together, and, you know, likely eighty thousand would be that, I don't know what that's, that's probably a year contract, I don't know. Didn't get, didn't get specific, I just wanted to get down paper for you to look at. Commissioner Nacita?
Getting to the other issue that arises out of this effort, and that's the funding issue. I'm, at the last work session, I raised the question as to whether this would, the need for money to implement whatever is done on this, and I know it's, it's going to be a while to decide what's going to be done, but whatever is going to be done is going to require funding. And at the last work session, I raised the idea of whether we should sell the two houses on Tomwater to fund this effort, and I'm wondering, I just want to sound the Commission out on their recept, its receptivity to such an idea, whether that should be discussed here currently, whether we should put that on a work session. There, the title in those houses, I understand, is in the Urban Renewal Commission, so it seems that if we wanted to go down that road, we would probably have to send a resolution of some sort to the Urban Renewal Commission with the request, but because, because whatever we do on the Abernathy Green Site is going to require money, I would like to begin that discussion right now.
Let's put that on the work session, and the money, and the how-do-we-fund-it category.
Okay.
So, then staff has an opportunity to respond to that as well. Other comments on this, and correction, or is there anything...
When's our next work session? October thirteenth?
October thirteenth, yeah.
October thirteenth.
Will that work for the visitor center?
Um, we don't know. We don't know. This is all, a lot of, we don't know, and what-ifs. Because there's, there's short-term tasks, and then there's long-term tasks, so, but we do have to agree on a process, so do some serious thinking about, about that, because I think, I don't think it can be done without a funded person, so...
I think a question's being asked from the audience, I don't know if the person wants to come up and ask a question.
Did you want to respond? Yeah, come.
If Commissioner...
I'm just not, I'm just not good at reading lips, so I couldn't... I'm just not, I'm just not good at reading lips, so I couldn't.
My question is, and I'm already from a senior house, Oregon City. My question is, there is a meeting coming up on the twenty-second for the Community Tourism Development Group. Is there something that you could direct this group to direct their, their comments, their, what is going to be happening at the next one is long-term visioning? Is there something that you could direct this group to be looking at, to ask, to think about? Could, could this group have some direction from you? Is that a legitimate question? We want to be in sync with what is happening. We, we want to be viable for whatever it is that you are going to be creating or developing. And so, if this could be one of the facilities or facilitators for something, is it, is that a fair question? If you could give some direction?
Yeah, we haven't done revisioning yet, I mean, we haven't, we, I think the answer is we don't know, because we haven't set ourselves to do the task.
I mean, I don't think there's any problem with you, having, having you all come to the work session.
Sure.
You, you really have as much as we have in terms of information here.
Yeah.
You can, you can take this with us, you've heard some of the discussion, and, and you're all welcome.
Is that all right to do that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Of course.
Well, sometimes we get involved in work sessions where we're talking among ourselves and sort of limit public comment, because we're trying to see, you know, get at the field, but I think that's fine, yeah.
Sure, and, you know, and if you have ideas for, you know, people that should be on the, on a committee, or ideas for funding, you know, bring them all together. Great.
So, October thirteenth then.
The, our next meeting, visioning meeting, is September twenty-second. That is going to be kind of a brainstorming session as far as long-term and, and kind of big-picture visioning. So, that's what I was wondering, is if there's some direction that you would like to give this committee, this group?
Yes, this is all I think we have right now, it's just.
So, take this and go forth?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And you're all invited, sixth Thursday, Tuesday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next of all, I have a couple more things. We had the ceremony in nine eleven, I want to thank our Terry Bankhead from our staff and everybody that worked hard on that in the Police Department, too. I mean, I got a letter from a gentleman in Milwaukee, where you're here. Even though I live in Milwaukee, I travel frequently through Oregon City. Thank you for flying the beautiful, huge American flag from the O.C. Bridge. I'm proud to be an American and thankful for those who gave their lives that I might live in a free country. Let's resolve to keep it that way. And it was a beautiful ceremony, it's likely the last one we'll have for two years, so it was especially poignant, I think, because of that, very well-attended, and again, I think staff for that. Secondly, the groundbreaking that we did for the realignment of the Warner Milney Road project was a nice event. I think the two, two things that I took away from it is that that will be a job, a, a project that creates seventy-nine jobs. So, it's one of our two stimulus projects, and I think everybody's pretty excited about getting that going, and that job creation is fabulous. The other thing that I took away from it is that a woman from ODOT spoke that day, and she had added up all of the projects that we have received money for from federal government, state government, and, and it adds up to thirty-two million dollars. That's pretty darn.
In Oregon City?
Good for Oregon City.
Yeah.
Thirty-two million dollars that we have, of course, twenty-two of it's the jug handle. But Oregon City hasn't been on the receiving end for a very long time, and that's just absolutely terrific. So, and then Saturday was the celebration of Sister City's thirty-fifth anniversary, and Oregon City was honored to entertain the Council General of Japan and his wife. Delightful people, they stayed for the taiko drums, and we really had a, a really nice, nice day in the, peace, we dedic, we had the groundbreaking for the new peace gate that will be built down on our Pioneer Community Center in the Japanese garden. I wanted to announce also that I will be appointing a group of citizens to work on the art committee, they're actually arts practitioners, that will be working at the arts committee, the art for New City Hall. Let's see, and everything else, I think that's pretty much my, that's mine. Any others have reports from the committees then, in which you said? Just a couple of short ones. Commissioner West.
I have a few things to update on Main Street, or news from Main Street. One is that we are continuing our talks with Farmer's Market, I know I've talked about this before, and the direction that the conversation seems to be heading is that they might consider a midweek market downtown Oregon City next summer, and possibly one of their favorite or one of the preferred locations is on Eighth and Main, in between Railroad and Main, so right below the cascading Singer Creek Falls there. So, they're also considering doing two holiday markets, one at Thanksgiving and one at Christmas for foods to buy for holidays. So, we're hoping that that will work out. Larry brought up that we're going to go with, at the League of Oregon City Conferences, October second and third, and I was just going to, for those who aren't going Lloyd and Oregon City, we're going to be showcasing how to start a new Main Street program as part of a breakout session, and so that'll be exciting to do. And the, another thing that our Main Street Conference or Main Street Program, we just got invited, or I just got invited, to speak at the Oregon Economic Development Association Conference in McMinnville on October second, or twelfth and thirteenth, and they want to hear all our successes. So, I see that the lineup of people speaking of long-term Main, Main Street programs, and we'll be the new one in there, so we'll talk about our low-hanging fruits that we've been getting.
Congratulations.
Yeah, haven't got the big projects yet, but we're working on it. So, that's all I have to say.
Great. Anybody else?
Well, I'll say something.
Commissioner Neely?
I'm not part of any active committees anymore.
Oh, you're, you got, you got, you needed a new one.
Well, well, I.
I believe you're going to Impact next week.
I am going to Impact, yes, but as a representative, and I believe there's something about the Kellogg Creek Facility that I'm involved in. I did want to mention something now. I am a member of the, of the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council and a board member of that group. There was a presentation made last month by Jerry Herman and Paul Edgar to the, to that particular body in terms of the Cove development. I will be making a report to this particular group of the, the development as it, as it is now. I will also talk about the, that we're in the process of looking at a task force. Now, let me just simply mention that the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, purview, does not involve the Clackamas River, the Cove. It is a, it's a body that deals with streams that flow directly into the Willamette River and basically includes Abernathy Creek and the Parry Beaver Creek system and all the small streams in between that fall into the Willamette. And of course, they are interested in these particular issues, and I will be reporting to them.
Great, thank you. If that is the, oh, Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to make a couple announcements. Actually, first of all, I just, it was nice to have Barb come tonight and straighten up, talk about Oregon City one of fifty events. It was, it seemed like some of those things were so long ago, and I actually forgot about some of them and how, how to hear it all.
We did a lot.
Together.
We did a lot.
Was just great. But I do have to correct Barb, I was actually Sam Barlow.
Oh, that was my fault.
And Dr. Barclay, so I just wanted to say that.
Sorry.
The other thing that I wanted to mention, and I've been told to talk to Nancy Ives, so I hope she's listening, because this is for next, next city commission meeting. October sixth, the day before city commission meeting, will be the Oregon City West Lynn Breakfast at the Oregon City Elks Lodge hosted by the Oregon City Optimist Club. And of course, that is an annual tradition with the football teams of Oregon City High School and West Lynn, formerly Union High School. It'll take place on the, October sixth, six-thirty in the morning. And that's a, a tradition, but on the Tuesday fall, or preceding the, the big game. And then our city commission meeting will be on the seventh, and then October ninth will be the football game. And if I, I hope I'm correct on this, I believe for the eighty-eighth year.
I think that's right.
And so, hopefully, at the next city commission meeting, we will work on that, and I will also share a squishy moment talking about some of that history. So, that'll be exciting.
Football?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Thank you.
Good, that'll be nice. That it? Okay. That's Commissioner Nocita?
Actually, I have three items. First item I have is to report on Saturday, I attended the grand opening of the Green Line of the New Max Train.
Yeah, I did too.
And rode into the city of Portland with a number of other elected officials. The route went up to the Gateway Center and then on the tracks into downtown, and then to Portland State University. And it was very nice to meet some of the officials at TriMet, Fred Hanson, the director, and I chatted with him and got to know him a little bit. And when he spoke up on the dais in the plaza at Portland State, he, he, he turned to me and gave Oregon City a shout-out by name as a city that is someday in the future is very much looking forward to an extension of the Max Line into Oregon City. And I.
Did you get one of those flashing green lights? I gave, I gave those to the Council General from Japan, I gave him, his wife, the little flashing lights, that go green.
No, I, yeah, I saw them, I didn't, I didn't actually pick them up. That, but it was, it was a very good day, and, and, and I very much look forward to making a lot of use of, of the Green Line in the future. A second item I have is the metro trip to Vancouver is coming up on the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. And Mayor Norris alerted me to that, and I'm very appreciative of that, because some of the things that are going to be discussed, I think, are very relevant to our area. In fact, on the Green Line trip, I got to chat in some detail with Robert Liberty, about a lot of the concepts that he has seen in Vancouver and, and how they could be useful to our, our neighborhood. I don't know if we've discussed this at a prior commission, my memory is, is very fallible on a lot of things, I just wanted to get the commission's blessing on my, using my expense account or our expense account from my participating on that trip to Vancouver.
Absolutely.
And I will give a full report. Might even be interested in shooting up some pictures, you know, with my digital cam there, if you're all interested.
You'll have it, you'll enjoy that.
Yeah, there may be, there may be some staff people going to.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll look forward to reporting on that. Last thing I want to chat about was, I wanted to alert the public that we, the city has experienced a loss of some of our executive session minutes. I think it's four meetings, and I wanted to thank our city recorder Nancy Ives for some of the very valuable suggestions she has made regarding ways we can ensure the retention of our minutes to potential loss, and I look forward to working to, working with her and the rest of the commission to implement those. I do want to make a suggestion for our next work session, and I've raised this over email with my fellow commissioners, and that is, the question is to whether we as a city should just accept the, the floor, the retention floor that's in the Secretary of State's retention schedule regarding executive session minutes, or whether we should be more broad in our own management of records. I've expressed the opinion that I really think, given the gravity of subject matter that is discussed in executive session, that executive session minutes should be retained permanently. And I, I do want to engage in a discussion about that, and I'd like to, I'd like to put that on.
A work session.
The next work session agenda as well.
Perfect.
Great.
I would, I would suggest we also broaden that, because on far more than one occasion, I brought, I brought up the fact that the minutes we receive are two and more months later, the one study session, I think, dates back in several months, too. I will tell you, when I first came onto the commission, we, we always had the minutes of the previous meeting at the next commission meeting, so we knew exactly what was there and so forth. And we, we vote to approve minutes, but you say your memory's sometimes faulty, I think that, that applies as people get older, so that means probably more than.
For yourself.
One of us are, are in a particular situation, that we need to, we need to really guarantee that we, when we're approving minutes, they're of the last meeting. And what mechanisms are we going to need to do that?
Okay.
And I think the city manager has indicated, he agreed, that there would, there'd probably be some additional expense involved, and we need to discuss that in even the broader context of.
And our city recorder gave us a great memo on that today, too, so, thank you. Okay, we've got that. We will adjourn to executive session pursuant to RS 1926602, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions and subsection H to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation, or litigation likely to be filed.
Ten minutes, five minutes?